Pledge of allegiance to the law. It states that there is no doubt which stands based in principle. Mrs. Fish. Thank you. Just so people are aware, we are recording a meeting. All right, we're just doing a test.
Yeah, I don't hear it coming back now.
Is there a recording or else it's dead because it turned? Turning over. Before we start our meeting, I just have a statement. It is the board's desire to create a budget that is a financial reflection of our school's education mission and goal. We are aware of concerns that have arisen because of our budget planning and discussion. I'd like to take this opportunity to share some of the factors that are impacting our budget discussion. June 16th, 2021, the board acted to create up to eight new positions. These positions were designed to be outside of the regular budget and their full cost was to be covered by the federal funds that were made available to schools to help mitigate the lost learning opportunity created by the COVID pandemic. The board felt that being able to support smaller class sizes would create classrooms that offered more individual attention, increase participation, and would result in enhanced learning. At the time of their creation, the board did stress that the positions were funded by the CARES Act and would last only as long as the fund were available. You have exhausted. Losing the number of teaching positions to at least pre-COVID levels is a financial necessity. Cannot support the additional positions in our budget. Along with the need to reduce positions, we also have several other factors that are impacting our budget. The formula to determine our tax levy limits, which is how much money we can raise through local taxes, results in a local tax reduction. Inflation continues to impact the cost of all possible programs. We must budget for increased costs to cover salaries. We must also budget for significant increases to cover benefits. We have increased student needs which must be met requiring reallocation of funds by necessary services. This isn't surprising to us. We have been moving towards a strategic reallocation of funds to make sure that Salem Central School is educating and supporting students, getting the most from every dollar spent. Sort of tried to put it in a nutshell on pink bread. We are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Though state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about the concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. Public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously, want to have sufficient time to process any research if needed. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, you are unable to entertain any comments or questions about specific school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. In these matters, we would ask that you go through appropriate and administrative channels. If you're unsure of who to contact, you can find the communications flow chart under the Board of Education tab on the school website. We want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. That spirit will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any diversion news that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In unlikely event that the meeting becomes unmuted, board will recess the meeting and return once our comments are restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Our policy on public expression at meetings provides for a period of up to 30 minutes to be set aside at the beginning and the end of each board meeting. Time limits may also be set. Tonight, individual speakers will be allotted between three hours. Individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be proud to do so. Also, in accordance with our policy, anyone making a presentation to the board, please come and stand at the podium, state your name and where you are from before addressing remarks to the board. Any group or organization wishing to address the board and come up to the podium, please, they must identify a single spokesperson who they're. This time, I'd like to open up the mic to our public comments. Questions and concerns? Would you please come off to the podium? Thank you.
My name is Natalie Kennedy. Um, I just wanted to speak about.
Could you just let us know where you're from as well?
Okay. I wanted to speak about the two cuts. I, I did hear what you said about the students' needs and educational needs, and that's why it's so important that we keep these two programs going. I have three people that took these courses, Cody, Ryan, and Akira. And Mrs. Felino took this course, a good course, and made it great. Eric, living test. Um, Ms. Felino knows what a student needs in a program.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You just cannot enter into a conversation about specific members if that's something that you would like to share with.
It's not specific. It's just saying why, why important it is that.
Can you talk about the position as opposed to the person?
Oh, the person. Okay. All right. So then I, I asked, is this program is a good program? This program should survive. Um, you know, because this program, you know, a lot of, a lot of students that, you know, got better, but you know, I have three that were struggling because of this program. They got better. So what I'm saying, asking the Salem School Board and administration to show other schools as well as our community that cuts can be found other places so that no teacher is left behind. If I can't be specific, we need to keep these, we need to keep these courses. Not specific to the teacher, but we need these courses to stay. It's unfortunate you won't let me speak on a teacher and how this teacher made this program the way it is and how they helped each student. That's unfortunate, but we need to try to, and you can cut other places, especially when you just said students' needs and education needs are apparent. These two courses are apparent. Thank you.
Looking more like it. My name is Phil Keating. I was here last month. Three people in attendance. Glad that the school has done something that the, the community is concerned about. My concern is still about closing up the yard. I don't leave for one minute before interest in taking care of the roots. I signed a contract last month that it's a big to renew or to do additional work, design work to close up the yard. Even though you said that everything was still on the table and under discussion. Roof was leaking right now. The reason I say that is because they're not going to start any work in the yard until 2020. What's going to happen is you're going to go ahead. You're going to close the yard job. Soon as that's complete, you're going to go over another. Didn't do the roof for three and a half. My understanding is the school, again, to some of the students. This school still carries a million plus every year, right? Over. You have a million dollars that you carry over from here to here. So to address some of these people's concerns, use some of that money. Some of the taxes for that money. The other, I did have some thoughts last month after I got home. I thought about driving back. Probably would have had twenty-five more minutes to speak. I asked you when, when stage two came into effect to please bring to vote for the voters. I had a brilliant idea. But we're going to have a vote here sometime in May on the school budget. On the ballot. Mission one. Two. School plus. Three. Grand library. Four. Board of Education. Asking the board, but on a non-binding proposition. Last one. That can be for the taxpayers to decide to give you the information where they are more concerned about clearing the building, keeping the roofs up to date, or closing off the yard. And I did suggest that you could park the buses, let the kids walk around. But you don't have to let the kids walk around. Any of the bus drivers, if you come in, pull in, just see what it looks like. I don't check. Ask you some questions as well. So you have a good evening and I'll see you next month.
Is there anybody else who has additional questions or concerns at this time? Yes. Just come up to them.
I'm the player, of course. I'm up here. Um, I just, I realized, I guess, in school. Um, I think I have forced. He was not looking for his stadium. He did this. Sometimes it's good that, that maybe professionally he had an honor of state to put us back on the right track. Um, he realizes sometimes, sometimes the school officials they had that maybe qualified, you know, to find money out there that is, that is available. Because he would go to schools, Rogers, all over the state, and kind of show them what they're doing wrong. Sometimes hidden, very educated people that do this stuff. It's just better off, you know? Us small times, funny struggles, the bigger things though. So. I realize this, if we spend on, to handle that much money, you can, you can go downhill forever. That's kind of what I think is, is maybe a route that you, you should, you know, ask. You guys in the board. To handle that much money and do is, you gotta be, but you, I think, is like educated. It's, oh, I gotta say.
Thank you for sharing this with us.
Hello, I'm Stacy Parker. I'm a retired teacher. Um, who spent twenty-five years here at Salem Central. And just as you said, Ian, that you guys are going to be taking in information and coming back um, with answering some of our, some of our questions in future, future meetings. I just have one that I think um, a lot of people are wondering. And the question is, why is Salem the only district in the area with exhausted federal funds? That a lot of us really believe that COVID money was going to be lasting through 2024. So we think I'm kind of representing what a lot of people aren't feeling that, you know, we think everybody's um, blindsided a little bit about this, that we did not feel that we were in such a dire, a dire strait right now. So I just kind of wanted to bring that question up and hope that it would be answered in the next meeting or budget meeting. Thank you.
My name is Bob Segalsky. I'm from Rupert. So just a few quick points. One was segueing what Stacy said. My recollection, my notes from that era was that it was three years. I didn't go back. Those federal funds last three years, so I was curious about that as well. That I was thinking that, you know, when we made those hires on the board at that point, and when we made those hires, that there would be an extra year for, for re- retiring. I was curious about that as well. Um, the second piece was, it would not be likely to get up and speak and not talk about what meetings love. And, uh, and it was unfortunate that the video of last week's meeting didn't go up until today. Because I think that would have put a lot of people at ease because of those comments that were discussion last week that happened. And I, I think it's probably just an oversight. I'm not saying that was on purpose at all. But I think that that helps people kind of understand your perspective, right? Because it's, I mean, nobody runs for the board hoping to help people, right? And I think it's important for everybody to understand that, that, that that's not what it proves and it's painful and it's no fun. So, but I think that is, you know, as always transparency is your friend. So people can see the anguish that you go through. The last piece is, um, just, just quick, the, um, I also had questions on last week's, last month's agenda. Money being spent in a couple of areas that I think were not originally discussed in the original building project. They were similar. And so I was a little bit curious about that as well. I know that's one of the things that has been a gray area. I mean, kind of going back and forth trying to understand when I was on the board as far as what the board could spend money on. And, and I was thinking there were a couple of things that were, had not originally been discussed. There's clearly the large we had and, and it does seem like an awful lot of money. And, you know, from my perspective, it's, I mean, student safety obviously is important. There's ninety-something first floor windows on this, on this building. Somebody wants to get in, they're going to get in. So, but, but I understand the reasonable people disagree on that. I kind of like some of those points. Anyway.
Just so that we're clear, and let me answer that question. You're speaking about the continuation.
Right. The, the continuation, right? Because I think there had been, we've gone back and forth trying to understand whether, like, what the limitations were on that second phase. And, and my conclusion, and when we talked with architects and parents trying to understand what that was. And my recollection of those conversations, it isn't super well defined, but there was the idea that we were only going to continue with things that had been previously discussed. And it seemed to me when I, when I saw the minutes for the agenda from last meeting, that there was, there were some specific places that hadn't actually been discussed in the secure. Just curious.
Thank you, and we'll try to get those answers. Any additional questions or concerns to share with the thought?
So I guess I just can't picture how everything's happened. I just keep hearing bits and pieces. Here to just clarify, as, with the eight positions that were hired. My, my mystery is, were those people hired knowing that they were for their COVID money? Other districts that I'm familiar with, there were plenty of positions created, but when those interviews were had and positions were discussed, it was very clear and transparent that these positions are being created due to COVID money, smaller class sizes, extra sections of AIS, et cetera. So, um, you know, had I been a teacher who went and was told that, I actually was last year. I was a building stud, knowing that that was a COVID position because people were out for extensive amount of time. So it was no mystery to me that when the June came, that position was going to be over. So I guess being transparent with people, letting them know what they're, what they're voting folks signing up for is, is pretty important to me. And I just, the different positions I've heard, I'm not sure if that was the case because putting timelines together, um, it just concerns me. So I just wonder if we can have an explanation as to why seniority now plays a part when the, the temporary COVID money was to put extra people in. The people have made big life moves, uh, just to come here to teach at Salem. I'm thinking this is going to be their landing place, and that's different than, hey, we have an opportunity for you to teach, and it might come to an end. You know, you could be hopeful that at that time there's a retiree and that you could stay here. But those are two totally different things. And it just, from what I've heard, and whether it's right or not, or whatever, that's why I'm here, because it just doesn't make sense. And, um, back to what was said before, you know, the money was supposed to last three years, and here we're just starting in 2023, and this is, yeah, blind sided everybody. So here we are in this little community, um, that we all love, and we're all like, it's going on. That just literally happened overnight. So as a taxpayer, um, as an educator, and, you know, as a mom, just kind of wondering, you know, two of these teachers are, I'm here, here at my heart that taught my children. And I just, I like the transparency. I don't feel like that's happening. And I think it's important for where we live, and obviously keeping people here is, um, tricky. With the administration, which is another thing that I think everyone's always curious about. So why don't we try to do our best to attract people and be transparent and not have this, like, everyone knows about this around. And I'm in Cambridge and everybody's asking me, and I'm like, they're not. It's kind of embarrassing. So just, I'm here to get, uh, black and white answers as to timeframe and money and it's wise and what those conversations were with the people that are getting caught. And why those eight positions are not necessarily just ones targeting, but not that I want anyone to get caught, but hopefully those initial conversations with those eight people, this would have been, they'd have been surprised to know. Let's get your answers to all that, please.
Great points. Just echoing on what Jasmine said, was it documented that those were temporary teachers that were hired with the COVID money? Were they identified as a decision? I think that's really important. I also like to know data supporting those decisions. You know, some of the, the walls that are cut, being cut allegedly, um, I just want to know why some, I mean, there, you've explained the teachers that were just hired through COVID money, but the educators that had been here a while, that were not through COVID money. So I just want to know why, uh, they were chosen. And I think if you look at data-driven answers and you look at the success rates of some of these teachers in specific data points, and I can talk from personal example of my child in seventh grade versus now in ninth grade. And it's, it's remarkable, the gains that she's made. Mark. And, um, so I just think that data should be used in supporting your decision. This position to a unique, who's really happening, who's in impact. And that can be, that can be demonstrated, I think. We also, let's see what else. I also would like to have some clarity on the interim principles and just the principles in general, what they have accomplished. Very detailed. Very well paid. Very well paid. Principals are very well paid. Um, and there's obviously a tremendous amount of turnover. So something's not working and reality is, and perception is that, you know, the teachers, um, the teachers are, you know, the, the ones that are getting it done, right? They're the ones that are educating our kids. So in any other line of business, when there's cuts that need to be made, look at the top. I mean, look at people who are making the budgets. Look at the highest data base. And that's where you make your cuts. You don't look to the people that are impacting children of a child's life. So I would like to know specifically, I know for the elementary school, there have been at least six to seven. I would like to know what specifically they, just in their time here. And is that even a relevant position at this point? And is that something that you could revisit, looking at cutting, you know, do we need all, you know, just the business focus, okay? I mean, let's, let's be creative and look outside the box, not just target the ones that are working with the kids and are impacting, you know, their lives on a day-to-day basis. So, um, I also want to know if you guys have entertained any grant opportunities? If there's anybody that would be willing on the board or somebody that you could, you know, as a short-term contractor? A lot of grants out there? Um, maybe, maybe that. I mean, I'm, again, that, that's short-term money potentially, but, um, I just think that there can be more outside-the-box thinking and more strategic decision-making. Regarding, you know, I know that the reality is things have to be cut. But I just think that you should look to data to support your decision. Maybe put a halt on the next phases of the building program. Rather, rather than have, like, worked on anymore, I'd rather keep the educators. Thank you. And, let's see what else. I think we should focus on the future of the school. And I think all of these hires looking ahead and they're, they bring youth, they bring, they do bring experience, lots of experience. But they're in a food long haul, and I, I don't know if there could be some kind of incentive or something to. Educators. We have to look towards the future. And these are hard decisions. I don't. Um, so we recognize that this is challenging. I think, I think the focus should be on the future, not just making an easy cut. And, and just, and just, again, have, these people know, did they know that they were, they were only in it for three years and now it's two years? And I guess along those lines, um, I guess we really, you know, I don't know where all the funding went to. So I'm going to, on me, I haven't looked. Is that readily available on the website of where all the COVID money went? The expenses and the, how much has been spent of it? I mean, that, I think that's very relevant to know. And how much was given, how much was spent? Thank you.
Because they just step up right into this. My experience in grammar, I went to this school. Understand that, uh, certain things, there's this many doors because I went to Salem, Fox and. Most of the building, most of those people, it's crazy out and they, so.
The offers, they're not slow. They can choose. It's not really the time, it's economy. Very short.
My name is Savannah Dunham, and I'm. This is not as important as the teachers and the budget and all that stuff. But I do just want to make note and start conversation about the basketball merge in Cambridge. My understanding is that the deadline's coming up to kind of work through what we have to work through if we decide to do it. And I think that just needs to be talked about because it's all murmurs. And I think everybody should be allowed to raise their opinion or do whatever. Like, shouldn't it just be certain people behind the scenes? I would like it to be like, not public, but just where, like, everybody's radar. So not as important as all the other stuff, but I just wanted to make note that that's coming up and it needs to be discussed.
I went to about five different schools. Woodfalls, Cambridge, Greenwich, went to a couple. Salem was the first one that sat down. When I showed up to Salem, I was seventeen-year-old ninth grader on a computer. And every other school just melted past me, so I didn't. I ended up, I was. Classroom. But Salem stopped and looked. Salem stopped, didn't care about the computer. And didn't want to matter very much to a lot of people. But there is a room of male teachers inside this school that stopped and looked at me as a person and told me. And to be honest, a lot of kids that went here their whole life, and count three of them, dropped out there. I didn't. And a lot of teachers that wouldn't let me. I probably wouldn't. Even that, I actually. You know, it would be, I got out at 5:45. Yeah, I actually like, I care and I do stuff. I get up every day and I try. And to be honest, none of that would happen if you were somewhat building community inside Salem through the people. And they can bring in more people, bring in younger people, but our community's been thrown a couple times. You can't change the fabric of your school. People matter here, too, the people who go. At the end of the day, ninety percent of the kids don't care about the classroom. We've all been in the classroom. It's how it's, how it gets taught, how it gets pushed to you. So at the end of the day, information's just pushed to us. It really is. It's just push ads. We get a lot of stuff thrown. So long as it take time and make sure you get it, understand it, and want to keep going.
Please, Barrett. I have to talk about people getting their jobs. All down there on this. Many people probably have been there, knowing that they're going to get fired. And money is a hatter these days with everything. And I don't want to say any eyes, but there is one teacher that takes my day amazing, and then he's swinging over there. And I be here for seven hours. She, she makes it, makes it feel like three, you know? It's awesome. It's great. My opinion matters any of you guys. We should, like what the guy said, should go. Easy stuff like that. I love them all. Well, probably everybody over there. I know everybody. Everybody knows me. You didn't like weird stuff, right?
You got problems.
It's just, I come here, most, most kids, like Matt said, you want to grow up. Me, I come here as like, get away from home. I like to do nothing.
I gave you the classroom money.
But really, my sixth period with Mrs. Valero was quite the best one.
We've reached our thirty-minute time limit, so we do have an additional thirty minutes at the end of our business section. If anybody has any questions, we can start after. We can chant our business. Suzanne, do we have any other things to the agenda?
We do. Three point one, the internship experience presentation is going to be postponed until next month. And six point six, the mentor proposal is going to be coming up. It's due. Good evening, everyone. I know that there's a lot of interest, a bunch of discussions this week, and we will have a little bit more of a discussion. I will like a brief presentation out, so if anybody is not sure how long you're saying. And we, I will possibly answer some of the questions. We may not be able to answer all of your questions tonight, but Mrs. Dunagan and I will discuss, you know, how to ask it back to all of you if some of the questions are not going to be answered. But, you know, I did get a sense that there would be a bit of a turnout today. And so I did want to give you a little bit of an overview of where we're at. So there will be a little bit of just an overview. This is still a working budget and a draft, so there are formal to that until we have the final draft. But there will be, we'll be able to share our situation with you and maybe help you understand a little bit of how, how we've got to this point and, and kind of what we're still working on. You know, we have not made decisions, but, you know, we're kind of at the point where some of them are limited, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But a few other things I just wanted to update the board on is our principal search. So, you know, I think that we, I'm aware of the, and I know the board and I have discussed, we are all aware of the the amount of turnover among the administrators. And this is something that is very important to me. I think, you know, it's important to find the right person. We, someone, I'm, I'm sorry, we had several comments, but there was some talk about looking to the future. And I really believe, and for those of you that know, know me, that's something I, I think is very important. So we need to live in the now and really work on our, our, our challenges and our charge for today. But we also need to look to the future, and that's very important to me, to find that person. So today I did screen, we have several excellent elementary principal candidates. I did screen them this morning. My goal is, in about two weeks, is to have a small committee of some faculty, staff, and community members, family. Mrs. Hopper will be putting a note out once we kind of get the date. So we're doing two searches. There were several positions open out there right now. And I think where sometimes we fall short on candidates is we take a long time to get through the process. So we need to be, I think we have some great possibilities for the elementary principal. And I don't want to drag it out four, five, six weeks. So if you, I know there are, but if you people here tonight from the community, if you're interested in being on the elementary committee, let me know. It is somewhat depending on the availability of myself and some of the other team of kind of the cabinet, because we'll have one group of faculty, staff, and community members, well, another group of making up of, you know, Joe Wilbur, Wendy, and Paul, and myself, and Michelle Crandall. So we, we will have two groups on that night, again, just to expedite the process so that we can, you know, hopefully get the person that, the, the best fit for us. And we do have some people that are relatively local, so I think that's exciting. And I think that's really one of those pieces that would really help someone understand and know our community, that they, we know that they're aware of the challenges of a small district. So I, I'm very optimistic, but I, I do appreciate input on that process. So send me or Gina an email and let us know if you're interested, because probably tomorrow I am going to send out one or two dates that we're looking to do this and kind of look at who would be interested. So that probably most likely will be the week of the twenty-seventh. If we can't pull enough people together, it'll be the week of the third. I'd like to have this done before April break. And the end of next week, I'll be screening the high school principal candidates and similar process. Again, I feel like we need to move quickly. There are quite a few administrative positions, and these, the good people get scooped up fast. And I want to be in the game here. So in the past, we've kind of taken a long time, and, and I want to, I want to have people involved in the process, but I also, it's, we can't hold up the process trying to coordinate seventeen schedules. So, you know, I'd love to have you involved, so let us know. Okay? So that's our update. And the goal, my perfect world, I'd like to have someone at least for elementary here for the twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth meeting to be approved. That's probably a little aggressive with break in there. And whether or not the person may be coming back as a finalist and being on vacation. But we'll try our best, but shortly thereafter, and then a week or two after that, the high school principal. And the board is always great about, you know, having a special meeting so we don't miss out on somebody. So if you're interested in either the elementary or the high school, please, please let me know. Just a couple other quick things I would like to share. Someone brought up about the basketball merge. So this, we've actually had a few conversations at the board meeting over the past few meetings about the merge and the concerns about the numbers. And I, and not the, I don't know all the ins and outs of this section and this or rules, but really, we have to have the, we have to have a need and show a need for a merge and to provide opportunities for our students. It's not just something we can do to say, hey, we want to have a better team, or we would like to have more numbers, or, you know. So there, so there is a justification that we need to make to the section and to, so there's a process where both boards have to improve it, the league has to approve it, we have to file paperwork, and it's a year-to-year conversation. Now, sometimes, you know, a lot of times merges, kind of, some people would say turn into a marriage. But you really do look at that each year. We did have some early on conversations with some of the coaches and look at the numbers. I know a lot of parents have talked to me with interest in the merge. I've had people talk to me about interest in really trying to hang on because the numbers seem to be coming back to us. So Willmore and I met with the coaches from this season. And Mr. West, who may be, and Coach West, who may be in the mix next year, this year is with girls. And I'm not sure if he'll be girls or boys next year, so he was in the conversation as well. And really looking at the numbers, in the perfect world, we could have all three, we do have the numbers for all three teams. Now, we're not talking twelve, fourteen kids for each team. But the, the numbers do support not pursuing a merge this year. Anything can happen. I know that there, we've had a couple of rough years. Not having a JV team has really impacted us, right? And those experiences, the development of our players. And we're speaking really specifically, I'm sorry, for, for some of you may not be familiar with the boys program. And so I know it was a difficult year. I would say that I am so proud of our team because really, they showed so much sportsmanship and character in a really challenging season, and they never gave up. And, you know, for me, that's a lot of pride, so I do want to say that. But, you know, really speaking to the board at this point and looking at the numbers, I don't see the justification that we can go and, and go to the league and/or, you know.
So Julie, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. I asked for a detail of those numbers because I don't agree with that statement in any way, shape, or form. My son, as most of you know, is a one of those varsity basketball players. There are a lot of those kids that may have spun out this season, but they are not coming back because it was not pre. And so if we base it just upon the numbers that we have and hope that everybody comes back, on paper, yes, we might have seven for each level. But that is not enough to have a team. And I don't think all of those kids are coming back. So we really, really need to look at those numbers more closely, because I, I know a lot of them are not.
So I can, I can give you some general numbers, and I, and I will, and I apologize with some of this other stuff.
No, great.
Which is, I, I apologize that I didn't get those to you last week. I will give those to you again, you know, based on the numbers we currently have, anticipating that they would move forward. We, you know, again, on paper, we have the numbers. And I just don't know, you know, we have, I believe, and I'm not saying that every district does this, but I believe that we have to honor and, you know, set the example for following the spirit of the regulation and this, and the, and, and kind of what the, you know, whether the rules or the oversight of the process. And I'm sorry, we usually have a bigger board, but it was already promised to wrestling because we got business tomorrow night. And we have a really full house around the building tonight and we're just doing the best we can here with the. This may answer some of the questions. I'm going to tell you that we're not going to be able to probably answer all of your questions tonight just for the sake of time. And I don't know what the weather looks like it's okay right now, but you know, just kind of being mindful of all those things. This will give you a little more of an idea without going line by line. So I will say before we get started, this is a working draft. Even this morning, the numbers were different. And I want you to know how much time that the administrator and I have spent with Karen multiple times going line and and Paul and and Joe and really just looking at everything in our budget. And one of the things is I can't speak as much for the past, but I can speak for right now. As I can tell you and Michelle, Michelle Lynn, that I I feel like we're we're in a good place where we know we have a, we have a point now we're moving forward. I I know I don't think there'll be, I think we'll know a better place of where we where we are, where we're. And I'll talk about it a little more. But we do have another budget workshop on April 3rd. I sent that out my email. It'll end up being on the website. And then we will have another meeting, special meeting on April 19th for a final discussion where and that's where we would adopt the budget. And then obviously we'll have a budget hearing in May where we formally present the budget, all the different components of the budget more fully. And obviously then you will make your decision and support the budget. All right, so budget status, here we are in progress. So just to give you a little bit of an idea, and I'm not sure, is this the top, the little laser thing?
Yeah.
So I just turned it off. All right, I don't know how to do the laser, so I'll just I'll just point. So last year, or well, actually last year, which is this year, right? So we're talking about next year. This year, our budget is currently a 15 million, a little over almost 16 million, 15 million, 702,000. And so we look at our proposed budget with looking at, and I'll tell you a little more detail. So looking at our needs and kind of making some course corrections in a few areas. The difference from the prior year is 2.2 million. So you can see some changes. So that's our expense side and you can look at our revenue side as well as we do have an increase in revenue. And so, and Karen, please interrupt me because this is her, this is her area more. But so if I say anything incorrectly, please feel free to correct me. But the bottom line is school districts must vote, must present to the community a balanced budget. Okay, so so this is where we are right now. And we're looking at the balanced budget. So if you look here, our revenue has also increased, but not quite to the point of some of our anticipated expenses. So in a diff, so you can see our difference from our prior year. I think our revenue increase was, was it about, was it about nine, 8.7 was our revenue increase?
I was talking about the state aid.
Yeah, it was just our revenue in general, our projected revenue increase, I think, was about.
1.5.
Okay, and then, you know, but you can see that our expenses and our, we're still, we're a bit off here. Our expenses have increased about 14%. So we'll talk a little bit more about some of the reasons why we're we're here right now. So proposed expenses here are 17 million, 946,488. Our proposed revenue is short. So right now, we're in a deficit of $659,078. And again, we we can't, we can't present a budget that's not balanced. So we've got to get this to zero. So just a little bit, an overview, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it tonight. So there's Will, you know, in the budget hearing process, we'll go into this a little more detail and and Karen will assist with that. But our budget is primarily made up of three components, our administrative budget, our capital budget and our program budget. So I think there was some discussion about administrators and costs. And and our capital budget includes not big capital projects. So that's separate, you know, our big capital project of, you know, whether or not we should put a connector in and should we do our roofs and some of the other work that we've just done. That's a capital project and that's approved by the voters. So our capital budget is more transportation.
Capital budget is our buildings and grounds and all of our debt services.
And transportation's in programming.
Correct.
Programming. So buildings and grounds are facilities, right? Like the, they're turning the heat on and all of those good things. Keeping the sidewalks and good repair, our cleaning, our custodians, all of those things. So and then our program budget, that's really, you know, when you think of everyday serving. So admin and capital are behind the scenes. Program is really like our day to day, getting our kids to school and all of that work. So you can see here is that the admin and capital budgets have relatively modest increases when you think about, you know, where we're at with inflation. And so, you know, I think reasonably you could expect, especially in the capital and with facilities, the cost of fuel and oil and electricity and all of those things that kind of go along, supplies, those. So like we're talking about toilet paper, those types of supplies, not teaching supplies. But the bottom line is you would expect, you know, if that was six or eight percent, I think people would say, okay, that's that's inflation a little bit. So those are somewhat reasonable. And we have trimmed in those areas of what as well. They were a little bit higher, but not, you know, 10%. But we have cut multiple times in those areas to try to get that gap closed. Our program budget is 18% proposed increase right now where we're at, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So, you know, we're talking a lot about proposed debt reduction. So we've heard some of this. And you know, here's, here's the part that I and I appreciate that people are being very thoughtful and looking at this. And this is, this is very difficult. But the last thing that we wanted to do was come up and talk about this And so not to get into the complicated calculation, if you'd like to know more about that, I'm sure. You can find that or Karen can point you in the right direction, but basically there's a formula. So we have certain regulations and there's certain formulas we have to follow, follow and our allowable tax levy. Is negative two point nine percent. That's what we're allowed. And so that. That kind of prevents us from having a small or modest increase to be able to account for some, some of the additional programming costs that we're seeing. We have projected additional special education and other program expenditures. So new programs, added district expenses, training, professional development. Increased needs based on IP's, things that we're bound to by regulation in order to meet certain needs and. So I just want to very briefly touch and I understand the thought about. It is, it is something that we weigh very carefully administrators versus like boots on the ground with teachers and the faculty and the staff. The bottom line is some of. Some of where we're at with kind of special ed and programming, we kind of. We may not be here, but we, we thought maybe it's a good cross-stating measure. We had great, we were lucky to have great CSE chairs, but they. Don't serve in the full administrative role. So they, I'm kind of doing a psychologist job and CSE chair running meetings. But they don't, they're not necessarily looking at the future. They're looking at the now, right? Meeting the needs and so I think we. We kind of, we didn't have somebody with the expertise to look, you know, down the road and what training do we need and what programs and what should we build, be building towards? And so some of that, I think with having our director PBS now, we're, we're kind of getting that back and we're putting a plan together and. But, you know. People Personnel Services. So.
I think that's important. A lot of people like, I understand the terminology and we love.
Thank you. Yes, you're right. You're right. And I will try to do better. So you just give me a funny look or wave or something if I use, if I use an acronym. Okay. So projected increase in health insurance costs. So the, so our district belongs to consortium. They have raised a health insurance premiums and costs to the district by twelve percent. That is a certain significant sum of money that. Was not planned on, but it's just kind of part of the whole situation coming on COVID. There's just a lot of pieces to that. That, that is something that we don't have control over, but we need to come up with the money for that. And it's a significant sum of money. Increased cost of supplies, oil, fuel, you know, inflation that we talked about across the board and a lot of the different areas departments. Contractual salary increases, that's our, looking away our cost of doing business and, you know, we. That those are important, but those are, that's our cost of doing business and they go up. And so, so that's something that's gone up, will be going up.
Play more a little bit more. So every teacher has a contract that says every year they're going to get an increase or every X amount of years or.
So, so, so WADA, the teachers' union is called WADA. And Wasiya is our employee services group. And so they negotiate contracts that are for a certain period of time and actually. We just approved an agreement to extend, but we will be starting negotiations with the teachers' union as well. So, you know. Usually for the four years, so the contract's up at the end of the school year. For those four years, we agree and negotiate, we come to an agreement and a contract of what their increases will be for the next four years, what they look like. And so those could look, could be a consistent. Yes.
Contractual, we've been working, we'll call it steps.
I'm just, I'm not in the education.
Every year you move up one step on that, that ladder. So you can get your contractual pay raise, contractual pay raise along with that step increase. Obviously, we do it to top steps. It's an annual increase beyond that.
So, and I will say that for the sake of time. I think if, if the board permits, we will allow for a little bit of questioning, but I don't want, you know, we've got to be careful not to go through two hours. And we will have other opportunities. So if I, if I don't answer your question, I say we'll get back to you on that. We will get back to you. So. Mrs. Eastman, I will take notes and she'll, if, if there are one things that I need to get back to you on, I will. But I wanna, I do think it's important that people understand kind of what goes into the budget. So. Increased cost of textbooks, material supplies to meet new curriculum needs. So next generation standards have been pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. Because of COVID, pushed back multiple times. It is here, we are actually have started and. For a variety of reasons, we haven't fully established our curriculum. We have next gen science kits that cost about fifteen hundred for a grade level for them to have all of their kits. Some have bought a few. We're working on that, but we need to be all into next gen next year. And, and I'm going to talk a little bit about ARP funds in a second. So I'll kind of come back to this a little bit. And we did just start, have this exciting, it's very exciting, I believe, for all of our ELA teachers K through six is that. We, they did a lot of work last year and a lot of work this year and we've gotten back to a fully aligned vertically aligned K through six reading curriculum. Which is going to really serve well foundationally in the classroom. Is really allowed us to take a really a look at how we deliver reading through all three of our tiers. And, you know, we could possibly have another conversation about what that looks like at another time. So really all of these additional expenses are about ninety thousand dollars just to get, so not including. The reading that we just purchased, that was about sixty thousand plus. In addition, we have additional PD that we've been working on. We have been charging all of that to our ARP funds, the reading. If it wasn't for the ARP funds, it would be very difficult for a district of this size to roll out. A full K through six or K through eight initiative all at once. It's extremely expensive and. It's really hard to do in one full year. So you'd be looking at a phase in. So this has really given us the opportunity to work on that. And the other pieces are, are ARP funds are close to exhaustion. So again, on the website, we're required to post our different. So I think what people talk about COVID money, so there's different kinds of COVID money. So my sense is people are referring to some of the grant money that, so there are two grants, the CARES Act grant. And the ARP funds. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those, but we did post them on the website and. That is really like our best look at the time when we had to apply for them. There was a great time of transition here in the district and actually as a high school principal before I, I. I wrote them for all of the districts, we're doing the best we could, working with the faculty and, and, and the administrators, Mr. Duty at the time. We were behind on getting those written in. So we did, we got them done and it was our, really our best case scenario and you are allowed amendments to those. And so we've had some situations come up where we needed additional professional development for our teachers, for current initiatives, our current mandates through special education. Certain compliance factors that we needed to work on and, you know, so we have the need to go back and amend some of this. So we had teachers in here, the CARES Act, we had one teacher in, one position in the CARES Act and that has, that has expired. These fines we have until September. Of what, which year, twenty-four. So September twenty-four to the pre-PRP funds. There are not. Enough funds to cover all of, all the teaching positions. A lot, so someone asked a question and this is what I'll say. Again, you know, it's easy to look back and, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty. A lot of districts are, some districts statewide will be in our situation or maybe it'll be next year. But we are. We've invested a lot of that money into teaching positions as opposed to a lot of districts went for. New curriculum, went for kind of purchases that were kind of long lasting and would. Not necessarily have to say hello, I'm going to cut you in two or three years. So that's why you're going to see, it depends on the decisions that the districts made on how to use those is what I'll say.
Just really quick, the ARP fines are, it's the COVID money or that's something.
I think that's what, I think that's what people are referring to. It's not necessarily COVID money. These, these grants were to remediate the effects of COVID and there are very specific requirements of what you can and can't use them for. But, you know, we, we used more than we anticipated. We had much greater need for Chromebooks and some of. Some different types of electronic devices. We, we've really tried to move, we've had to move some money around. And utilize the grants to where we most needed them. So one of the things that I think Mr. Keith was talking about is that. Now we talk about fund balance every year. This year we are, you know, I'm not sure a year we had a million dollars, I don't. But this year we are not going to have a million dollars of extra fund balance because we've had a lot of unplanned costs. We've had inflation. So we're in a little bit of a different place right now.
A question here. Somebody had asked a question earlier that, that funding and how it's going to happen and using it on our website.
The ARP?
Yeah.
So the, we have to post the application and it shows the breakout of what we originally and, and what we. Yes, it has to be posted there. So I think it's with like our other plans. So if you go to the webpage where the plans are. So there's other.
Yep. Gina can help you too.
So let's talk about. Reductions and why. So I want to go back for a second. This year, so we have all these increased costs, right? So what might have caught us, cost us forty thousand dollars in the next quarter. So the bottom line is that. We would normally put these things in our general fund, in our program budget and in order to re, so we were started out at over one point two million. We took, so we had to make some decisions and generally try not to do this. We took a lot of our textbooks, materials, supplies, a lot of the next gen. Because they would qualify under the rules of ARP and we amend that. So we're taking about ninety thousand out of those funds. So that's why we're, we're dipping into the ARP to get the materials that we need. Forward with next gen. So back here for a second. So. Again, we're going to talk about positions, not people, and I know that is difficult because they are people. I totally get that. Totally get that. And so. Here's, here's why we're where we're at. Again, hindsight's twenty twenty. The idea was that over time there might be attrition. I believe that was the mindset of there would be some attrition to. Keep the people hired early on with some of that additional funding that we were receiving through those grants. Last year we did have some, some retirements and or people leaving over the past two years, but we filled those spots. So that kind of complicates. So they're hired in probationary spots. So you go by seniority. As opposed to someone might have been initially hired with the ARP money, but then others left and people came in to replace them. That were not as senior. So I don't know if that will answer some of the questions. So that's how we look at it. So these are the proposed reductions. I don't like to say cost savings because again, it sounds like there aren't people attached to this. But this is why we need to go beyond the elementary and I don't know if some of you, I don't, I don't remember how far it got. But a few years ago before COVID, some of these positions had come up previously. As previous reductions. So let's talk a little bit for a second. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but in the orange. And some people might say, well, why those two areas at the high school? This is the history of reduction over the years. Almost every other department has seen reductions. And this is to the best of our research and knowledge. It's not something that was really kept. You know, so it could be off a year or two here or there, but this is the general kind of reduction process and some of you can kind of think about when that was. So this is the best of our research in like a week's time because I thought this might help people understand. We've reduced a lot in several, in most of the departments or areas. And so when you look at remedial reading and remedial math. So we have one remedial math person, we have three remedial reading. And one of the things that, so again. As we're looking at programming and meeting the needs of our students, which is first and foremost, we are looking at how we deliver. But having now this more structured program HMH, the resources, one of the things that we're looking at is. We've had, I guess, the luxury of a lot of having our specialists in reading, serving a lot of our, so we call them tier. One, two, and three students. So tier one is your basic classroom and maybe we'll have a little workshop on art's response to intervention in the tiers. And that's the much, all of your students. And then tier two are the students that are struggling, they may be behind. So you may work and put students in small groups and have small group instruction. And we're really working on that with all of our classroom teachers this year. We've been working on professional development. We've been looking at how to support teachers and give them the tools and resources. Because typically tier two is first attempted in the classroom and. Because we've had three teachers, because we've been in a good place for those, that amount of years, we've had the opportunity to really expand that. Have extremely small and very small group sizes and yes, those work. But we're in a situation now where we need to restructure that and restructure what that looks like a little bit. And I'll talk a little bit about the business as well. But I want you to see is that the business in reading are the areas that have increased over. The more recent years versus all of the other, a lot of the other departments and. Areas have decreased. So that is, that is some of the rationale and why we're where we are right now. Not, I'm not saying it's. Ideal, but that, that is the rationale why this is what the board and the, that we're looking at as a possibility.
Yeah, people back on slide two for clarification. I, I wouldn't want anyone who looked at this graph think that a K-12 really teacher is making ninety-seven thousand. But benefits.
That's a close with benefits.
Right. But I don't think the public. I wouldn't want someone to think that there's a teacher making ninety-seven thousand.
Right.
That includes social security, unemployment, retirement, which is set by the state.
Right.
And oftentimes, a large percentage of that is benefits. So it would be a misnomer for people to.
Right.
To buy a seven twelve math teacher making ninety-eight.
Yes, correct. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me to, to point that out. The other piece of that is, is this is future projection. Based on, you know, again, we don't know where we're going to come out contractually. This is based on future projection right now. And as you said, there are a lot of numbers in there and there are probably some numbers when, when teachers look at their salary agreements, may, may not realize are in there. A lot of times we just think about our, kind of our base number and our base salary. So how does that proposed reduction in the elementary school, how does that affect? And I got crazy with my yellow and I put a couple yellows in the wrong spot and I still don't know how to use that red. But I need a lesson on that. So I wanted to show you up here. So this is, these are our current sections. So. We have three sections in K and second grade right now. We have two sections of pre-K. So pre-K is, is universal pre-K and it's funded through the state. We are. We are, we this year funded one of the classrooms in addition to the, so state aid gives us funding for one classroom, twenty students. And it doesn't cost, it doesn't really cover even really when you look at the whole cost. It's not even really giving us all of that. So we do, the district does make up for some of that as well, depending on the salary of the teacher, how many aides you have in there. So if you have seventeen students, you can have one aide. If you have eighteen to twenty students, you need to have two aides. So kind of, there, there's a lot of factors that go into a curriculum. There's some other things.
So the state only gives one set fee for that cost?
So right. And so you, you would see like if you went on the, if you went on state aid and looked at Salem, I believe it's about one hundred and seventy seven thousand for next year for universal pre-K that we're, we're awarded. So there are a couple other requirements. So we put out an RFP. We, we are required to share up to ten percent of that money with another qualified program possibly. So right now, so this year, we didn't have anybody interested in that or any eligible program. So, you know, there's, there are a lot of factors that go into it, but just trying to keep it simple. So the idea is that as most districts do, most districts have a lottery for the amount of pre-K sections that they get funded for through the state because it's not mandated. So they, they use that. And so the idea would be one of those sections will be gained by reducing pre-K to one section. And we would have a lottery with those applicants. So Mr., if we move forward with that, Mr. Fish is putting together a letter which will be explaining the process to our, our current pre-K applicants that have already applied and any future applicants that were in the application process right now for pre-K for next year. And so then really, I got a little crazy and I should have highlighted this number two right here. So right, this three sections that we have currently in kindergarten would translate to three sections next year. In first grade, we would go back to two sections in first grade. So the average class size would be nineteen and a half with our current projected enrollment right now, not, you know, where we are, you know, last week, probably when we put these numbers together with those numbers in the classroom. And then same thing here, second grade going to third grade. So this is a little bit more of an increase. So that would put third grade sections to twenty four. So a little on the higher side based on what we've had over the past few years. But, you know, it is, you know, if you look around, you know, again, I think every person in this room agrees that our small, very small or smaller class sizes are beneficial to our students. But sometimes the larger class sizes have benefits as well in terms of.
Is support benefit showing that it's helpful?
I would say we don't have the data from, from our district, I would say. But again, I think part of the problem in fairness is that, I think it's a couple reasons. And one of them is the COVID impact. So, you know, our kids are still not where they need to be. So if you, someone just looked at a assessment course, I think you could say, oh, there's no data to support what we've been doing with the small class sizes. But not knowing the true, without having data on the true impact of some of those kiddos at the younger age.
There is data you can access through the organization. At those stages, actually the ideal class size is seventeen.
Right.
That's across the board. They've shown testing at, at almost every level that the ideal class size is seventeen. I, I can't think of, I, I, like, I'll ask the other teachers in this room here if anybody thinks they're not qualified or able to handle a class of twenty four because I don't think I ever had a class plus in the script. So, but there is, yes, data that says.
Right. Overall, I thought you meant for our district. So I, I, yeah, I wasn't targeting for.
Once you, once you get below seventeen, once you get below seventeen, you don't have enough kids to do cooperative learning, collaborative learning, any of the other, what the sprue would be, remote spectrum at least. But, but, and if you get above twenty five, it'd be most probably the worst of all.
For looking at twenty four for third grades.
If, yeah. So, so that's the potential impact on this model for next year, for elementary. So looking at reading, and again, I think this is, I know this is difficult because this is, we're small enough where we know the specific people that these positions impact. And I, it's, I, you know, been here for four years and I know a lot of these kids and a lot of them have come to talk to me and one percent the impact is, it's, you know, I think, you know, I think I, I had talked to somebody and I said, oh, they, I know that person's touched a lot of lives. And the person said, no, they've impacted a lot of lives. That's totally true, you know? And so right now, the situation is we, as I said, I've kind of already talked a little bit about this, but we have three remedial reading teachers and versus one remedial math teacher, K-six, and we have three remedial teachers, K-12. And again, it is a little, some people play apples in workers, but just giving you the idea of that academic intervention piece. And, you know, it is a little, a little heavy on the reading side. So, you know, I mentioned that we would talk about restructuring of remedial reading delivery service. So we wouldn't be eliminating programs. We're just looking at how are we going to deliver them? And in addition, we have been working all year before we even knew about this. We had been talking about some restructuring and just looking at how we're delivering just with this new age of age, the, the intervention resources available to the teachers in the classroom now. We've talked about a lot of our, some of our, our reading teachers and our specialized teachers have gone to some very specialized kind of tier three, you know, very intensive program training. So we have spent, again, looking back at the ARP money, a significant amount of money to really open up some different ways that we're going to provide more individualized and more differentiated reading interventions. So this is something we've been looking at. So we're not looking at taught remediation, but it could be a different person delivering that. Reassign remaining two reading teachers based on the need with the priority being tier three services and working, you know, there are different models that you can work on to make sure that we're getting kids different types and different levels of service. And, you know, we would really need to work closely with the, with the grade level teachers as well, I think, in that. And I just spoke a little bit about specialized reading instruction. And so there's different types of needs or academic intervention. And then there are students that have reading disabilities who throw special education and IEPs, individual education plans that could, we can deliver specialized reading instruction through resource room and/or special class types of reading. So those are things that we've been looking at. It may or may not, it's not whether or not we made this reduction that's always looked at because again, needs of students change over time. And students come into the district who need different types of services. So it's not necessarily replacing the other teacher, but it's something that we have to look at. And so we're, right now is always the time of the year where you start looking at those combinations for next year. And then also similar to math, when you see math in high school, we have math teachers who often can do certain types of AIS support. So some of those tier two supports, you know, some kids, maybe they're at a functional reading level, but just, but need more work with their literacy skills, writing, reading comprehension and, and more skill-based, not necessarily some of the, you know, I'm a math teacher, so I'm not always articulate in how I talk about like the mechanics of reading and really overcoming disability. Those would not be in there, but there are other ways that we can do at AIS and intervention support with our certified English teachers, some capacities. And then business. So again, not, not saying our electives aren't important. We have students who are in these classes right now and who have taken these classes who have greatly benefited. But when you look at all of our electives, the numbers are very low compared to the others. So this is why we're taking a look there. So regulation was very specific over the years that it was very specific to so many partial credits of home and careers and tech and art and music. And because over the years of difficulties of finding middle level CTE teachers and could be home and careers, it could be technology and art and could be music, there's been a greater flexibility. New York State has gone to what's more like middle level CTE and they've given you different competencies or themes. So there are different ways you can meet that overall in terms of an occupational ed or CTE type experience. And so we actually have more from home and careers to more of a careers and kind of a skills focus. And that is something that we also should be working towards in our guidance plan. And I'm, I'm going to be honest to say here, I don't know exactly what the solution is right now today, but we have options to look at within our ag, our tech, our, and other STEM coursework would fit into that in the short term as we kind of recover financially. This is not, you know, where we want to be long term, but it's possibly where we need to be right now. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. What we have, have been doing at the high school over the past few years is starting to really take a look at some of our electives because our elective courses were lower, sometimes the lower numbers, like maybe you have eight or nine or seven students, maybe ten or twelve. But sometimes offering them every other year gives students more flexibility and choosing. And if we can kind of plan a schedule for what's offered on even years versus odd years, it allows students to be able to plan ahead a little bit and possibly even get into more courses. You know, Mrs. Eastman, I see Mrs. Eastman's here and she's been working on some pathways and really kind of mapping out if you were an ag, when you would take, you know, animal science and when we're offering natural resources and science, we've gone every other year to between forensics and environmental science. So instead of having ten or twelve or fourteen kids, now we have eighteen or twenty kids, which gives again, more of a robust group. And, you know, there, there are some better possibilities, but allows us to offer more elective. So in this case, again, not replacing business, but right now we, we don't have a full one final business schedule, but I want to be clear about that. So this is someplace that we're looking. If we don't look in business, we've got to look at ag, tech, or art. There's not a lot of other places to go, but if you go back to that slide, if I went back to that slide, we've already renewed art down significantly. Ag and tech have been at one for a long time. The other option is, you know, where, where would other possibilities be? So a, a couple of years ago, when I first came here and we were looking at possibilities of cuts and, and I don't think it really made it this far. It was actually in, in the, in the beginning of the school year that there were some discussions about it. But the bottom line is that what we did was we, we looked at options where you could say, all right, we might eliminate AP classes. And so that cuts like a point, it cuts a point two out of this department and a point two out of this department and a point four out of this department. You know, or we could cut AIS out of the high school completely and that. So, so then you start reducing from a whole bunch of areas. I'm not saying one, that business isn't as important as the other areas, but we're going, you know, we're trying to look at. It's again, not an easy discussion for lack of a better term, minimizing the impact. And because the, the numbers are on the lower end, business math earns a math credit. So it's also could be in the math department if that's something we want to keep as, you know, as an alternative to the third math credit for some of our students who aren't.